Hey, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for being here this evening. We're glad that you're here. We're glad for the turnout and we appreciate your involvement in our city. All right, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. Please stand for pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Let me remind everyone that this is a regular city council meeting and that the rules of decorum are in place. Please silence your cell phones and put them away. Cell phones are prohibited in council chambers during the meeting, except under code section 551.023. All right, we have a quorum this evening. Councilmember Chris Rodriguez is absent due to illness. And City Secretary, do we have any public comments?
Yes, and the notice was posted at 2:00 PM on September 2nd. Tonight, first up, we have Linda Bone, Ward 1.
Good evening. I'm Linda Bone from Ward 1. First, I'd like to thank each of the members of the city council for taking the time and the responsibility for running this city and making important decisions for Alpine's residents. Sometimes it's a heavy responsibility to shoulder, and I appreciate each of you. I'd like to share one thought with the council members this evening. The thought, that thought being that a music-friendly city is not synonymous with being an alcohol-friendly city. About a week ago, I was thinking about Nashville, Tennessee, which is known as Music City USA, and decided to call friends that live in Nashville. I asked them, are alcohol sales or consumption allowed in Nashville city parks? The answer I received was, no, absolutely not, never. Does Nashville have music events in their parks? Yes. And people of all ages can come and listen to good music in a safe, family-friendly, alcohol-free environment. When you, the Alpine City Council members, make your decision about alcohol use in our city parks, I hope you remember that the city of Alpine will be in good company with the city of Nashville if you decide to keep our parks alcohol-free, as the founding fathers of Alpine's park systems set them up. Thank you.
Next up, we have Margaret Binley, Ward 5.
Hi there. Thanks for making space for public speakers. I think it's such an important thing, and I'm glad to be here. This is my first time to a council meeting, so I'm catching up. And I wanted to speak about the noise ordinance. And I'm just discovered today that there's actually a music advisory board that's supposed to be working on that, and I'm not sure where that is. So if I'm ignorant, that's on me, and I'll try to figure out more. However, I'm not really here to complain about noise, and I'm not here to speak in favor or against an ordinance, but I think we really need a discussion about it. When people participate in discussions, they hear other people's point of view, and they also, you know, can say their own, and there's some responsibility that's exchanged and shared. So that's really helpful. I've been lately hearing a lot of concerns about noise from short-term rentals and late-night music venues. I think all of, you know, short-term rentals are important. They're a fact of life, so is, you know, amplified music. But we need to also protect the peaceful enjoyment of our homes at night. I mean, I like to sleep with my windows open and listen to the sounds. They're beautiful. They're wonderful. But it's also really important to make sure that we don't discourage certain things like Art Walk, Viva the Big Band, the Celebration on Murphy Street. All of these are really important, wonderful community events that I think help bring us together. So that's, I mean, so I think it's going to be a really, I think it's going to be an involved discussion that we need to hear many sides from. I have some friends who live close to noisy, short-term rentals and loud music venues. And I'm concerned about our community losing these people if we can't figure out a way to take care of both, both sides of this issue. Let's see. I, I looked at Austin and Midland's noise ordinances, and they're both pretty onerous. And so I think if we can get the discussion going and make some headway on this before people get mad or before people feel threatened, either in their businesses or their homes, we can, we can come up with something that's really reasonable, that protects people inside their homes, but also, you know, allows for really interesting and exciting special events that bring the community together. See, I think that's it. I'm happy to be a part of any discussion. I, again, if somebody can get some information out about where the noise ordinance is at this point, that would be, that would be great. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Mary Ann DeBarbary, Ward 1.
Thank you. Good to see y'all again. And I appreciate you letting me come and talk. I realize a lot of people have the problem that I'm going to present to you tonight. I did provide some pictures.
Yes, the council.
The council has, okay. When it rains, I have a lake in front of my house and into my front yard. The fence at my yard, the front of my house, is at my property line, so everything beyond that belongs to the city. In 2020, I spent $1,500 bringing in road base because of this lake. It reduced the depth of the lake. And it creates a health and safety hazard, frankly. I had a handicapped friend visiting me back in June, and it started to rain, and it rained about 30 minutes, and she got ready to leave, and she could not get into her car. It was ankle-deep. So I went down on some rain boots, climbed across the passenger seat to move her car into my driveway. But it's, it really does come into my, anybody in front of my house can't get in. It's, um, it's, it's just, it really concerns me. And I, like I said, I did spend $1,500 bringing in road base of my own. On either side of the street's going either direction from me, or flat, the street in front of my house is arched. And there's nothing there. If it would be possible for the city to bring a road grader and cut sometime a little drainage ditch where the water would have somewhere to go, because it has nowhere to go where I'm located. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, see if you might possibly be able to do something to help me out. I would be very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Okay, lastly, we do have a request from Mr. Tommy Lewis, Ward 4, to discuss speed limit and crosswalks. As that's not an agenda item, we just need a majority vote in order to proceed with that public comment.
Okay. May I have a vote? All in favor, raise your right hand? Okay, opposed, non-unanimous. Come on up, Mr. Lewis. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. So, I'm a pedestrian and a cyclist, and thanks for this, Paul, by the way, and everybody that showed up. This is a big turnout. And I want everybody to be aware that I'm trying to get the speed limit on Holland and E reduced, getting some records for pedestrian-involved accidents. For, in, at, at the exact same spot, have I been flushed out of the way by people trying to cross Holland from Fifth at the train station? And I started into the intersection, and somebody makes a left turn onto Holland from, from Fifth, and just can't make up their mind whether they want to go in front of me or around me. They shouldn't be in the intersection at all. And if I, you know, had to say something, then it usually gets into a shouting argument. One person pulled over and apologized. He had Chihuahua license plates. Otherwise, one was a city employee, I mean, a county employee, and I got in a big shouting argument. He kicked my dog. So it's not, you know, the, I feel like there's not just one trick that's going to solve this. We probably need signage, maybe a crosswalk sign or painted lines on this. There's only like three sides of those crosswalks in this town anyway. But it would, 30 miles an hour down Holland is too fast anyway. I've skipped, that's a bad segue, but that cross-section at Holland and Fifth is super dangerous, and people feel entitled because they're in, you know, in a metal cage against pedestrians. And the law is, if a pedestrian is in the crosswalk, you can't make them take evasive action. And I think some law enforcement might help, you know, just set somebody up there and free tickets. You know, they're expensive. Floats out onto Facebook, and nobody wants that, you know. But I don't think it's going to change the attitude of some of these people around here. It's just going to have to be, you know, a matter of law enforcement and signage. I just wanted you to be aware, I'm going to get in touch with TexDOT. I have these records ordered on, on public record about, I guess, three, two or three people have been killed since I've lived here in four years. So I think it's important. I think it's in everybody's interest. If the speed limit is 20 miles an hour, you're going to go slower. You're going to notice things. You might want to pull over and buy some. I mean, that's a fantasy thought, but. Thanks for listening, and, and I'm going to be, you know, throwing in your side.
Thank you.
That concludes public comments this evening.
Thank you. We have no presentations or recognitions or proclamations. Let's move on to reports, city mayor reports. I just want to keep everybody updated on what I'm hearing when I'm out with the meet with the mayor, issues that are being raised, road drainage, for example, the noise ordinance, as we've heard. Also, there are some residents that have been asking about condemned properties, and what are we doing about those? Clocks. Several of the residents have commented about the clocks. And I just want everybody to know that we do have a volunteer who is looking at them to see if he can repair it. Also, I wanted to make everybody aware that we have a new talk show every other Thursday. It's called City Talk. It's on the radio. The next one will be this Thursday, and it starts at 9:05. We also are posting episodes on the city website, and then I'm putting them on the community Facebook pages, too. A lot of people are talking about the future of Alpine. There's a lot of excitement. Residents are getting involved. They want to do things to help move us forward. And so we're looking at a strategic plan, goals, how we're going to get there. Some residents have said we should add some personality to Alpine, maybe in some of our, our roadways that aren't TexDOT. In the, the city roadways, add something like, slow down, have a lean-up crossing, or something cute like that. So that's something to look at. I had a resident talk about maybe starting a pickleball league at Coconut Park. We have the tennis courts, and they said that would be a lot of fun. It's something that's up and coming. I had to look pickleball up personally to figure out what that was, and it does look interesting. On City Talk, our first guest was Chief LaSoya, and he spoke about National Night Out, which will be at Baines Park on October 4th. That's a city council meeting evening, so hopefully we can take care of what we need to take care of and get everybody out to the National Night Out. Meet with the mayor typically on Saturdays at the farmer's market from 10:30 to noon. And there will be one at the Granada on September 19th at 5:30. Overall, I am hearing a lot of positive comments. I've seen a lot of involvement, and we are grateful, because we want you here. We want you involved. This city belongs to all of us. And surveys, I've heard a lot of positive things about the survey. We had a survey up for the Parks Board, and the residents appreciated being able to have input. So anytime we can do surveys, I think they would be grateful. And then I believe the city manager is going to have some updates on much of this information here in a little bit. So you may have some answers to your questions about the noise ordinance and so forth. All right, let's move on to the city attorney report.
Like where?
You're welcome.
I'm the city attorney. The, our new municipal judge is doing very well. You know, it's nothing new to him, because he was Justice of the Peace here before. He's also a longtime member of the community, so he has a good idea and conception of how to deal with municipal court issues and people that are coming in and struggling with their tickets and all. So we have another municipal court next Thursday, I believe. We're having it every two weeks, and it seems to be going fine. So far, I haven't heard any complaints from G for the other folks about it, so I could take care of business. We've gotten rid of a lot of really old cases, so that seems to be going well. The Skyway Gardens, which brought to my attention, and that's a new development right south of town, and reviewed their development agreement, which, where they agreed to pave that street. It's called Letchy Hill Street, that goes from Highway 118 East to enter into Skyway Gardens. And of course, they've never paved it, so corresponding with them, they're supposed to give us a paving plan within the next 20 or 30 days. So hopefully, we'll get that issue resolved here pretty quick. On the airport, we're going to be talking about a couple of those matters on some specific agenda items, but I was just going to give y'all some, some of the things to think about. The, on the issue of airport leases, you know, we have, we have to have leases with everybody who's at the airport, because that's part of the rules and regulations that we have with TexDOT Aviation. And also, it's part of the ordinance is here, but we're happy to have it, because people make good investments at the airport. It's a big part of the economy here in Alpine. Part of it is that if you have a lease, you're not supposed to transfer or assign the lease or sublease it without first getting written, written consent of the city. You're supposed to give us 30 days' notice. And then we, I don't think we've ever withheld transferring it to anybody. Really, our only caveat is it has to be used for some kind of aeronautical purposes. We wouldn't prove a sublease for somebody to turn a hanger into storage lockers or something like that. But other than that, we welcome those kind of things. Another issue that we'll talk about in some more detail is about whether or not private people at the airport can do improvements and then come back to the city later and ask us for reimbursement. And although that sounds like a good idea, like somebody wants to help us, and I welcome it, really, when you start getting into it, it really violates a lot of state laws regarding public bidding and things of this nature, because as Megan has always told me, follow, you can't do something without public bidding. It's something that costs more than $50,000. And if somebody privately wanted to do a piece of a, a piece of something for $20,000, and then later do another piece, and then later do another piece, well, if it ended up with three pieces for more than $50,000, they could get in trouble. And more importantly, Megan and Gio would get in trouble, because there's criminal penalties if you try to evade the public bidding. So it's just, it's a slow, convoluted process to do public bidding and go through things. But it's done so that it's sort of transparent, and we all just sort of have to follow the rules. But we welcome all of everybody's interest out there. We welcome improvements out there. And then finally, the, we'll get into it more in executive session. But I continue to have correspondence and dialogue with West Texas Gas regarding our outstanding gas bill. I've raised some pretty insoluble issues for them, and they're scratching their head. They're trying to figure out what they can do. At the end of the day, they're going to work with the city. Let y'all know that that issue is not being ignored by city staff. Any questions?
Thank you. All right, city manager. So I'm going to address the updates first. Several of the items that the mayor had on her report. We do have a committee put together for the noise ordinance. It does entail a few members from the advisory board, but it's not the whole entire music advisory board. It also includes our chief of police and a couple of community members as well. We had our first draft up until Fiesta 1888, when the event happened. Feedback not only from the public, we pulled call logs from the police department to see if there was complaints. We decided we are going to meet one more time to address some of those, to make sure we do take into consideration larger events within the city, especially if they are outdoor in our parks. Fiesta 1888 is on Murphy Street. And so it's kind of a mixture in this ordinance. We do look at the decibel levels. We look at the time period. We look at locations. We do, like I say, have that first draft up until Fiesta 1888, and we kind of, oh, maybe we should address this, since it hadn't gone before council yet. Unfortunately, my schedule's been a little hectic, so getting the chief and Chris and I to sit down is still to be determined, but we are working on that. So there currently is no actual noise ordinance specific to music. It only deals with traffic. And the condemned properties. So in 2018, the city did condemn a couple of properties. Unfortunately, the process wasn't fully executed, and as a result, we have to go back and kind of start from square one. When you condemn a property and you tear it down, you want to make sure you legally have everything done to a T, so that it doesn't come back and affect the city. We were missing documentation to show that we notified this individual properly. And come to find out, we are, I, not we, I am learning new things. You cannot condemn a house that has a home exemption on it. What is it?
Homestead.
Homestead, sorry. A homestead exemption. And the individual did homestead their property in last year, so we wouldn't have been able to move forward with that as-is. They did not renew it. The appraisal district is aware of the current situation with this particular property. So our planning, our building services was called in and said, hey, let's get on the ball. The only way that this building can be re-condemned is we have to have the building in standards, which is why our council did receive an email from our city secretary saying, hey, we need to move forward with this advisory committee faster than, than waiting. You'll notice on our agenda, we're already reappointing our appointing new members, so that when our building services has everything lined up, all the notifications, it's gone through the process, we're not waiting on council or this board. It's already established. So the process is being re-implemented, so that we can address buildings. There are two that have been brought to my attention. One is of high interest, because it really does need to be torn down. It is creating public health and nuisance, so we're working as fast as we can legally to get that fixed. The clocks. Love the clocks. Number one email, if I ranked my emails that I get. And it's not a matter of opening up and setting the time. Unfortunately, over several years, several different people in charge of it, several turnovers, the clock itself actually doesn't work. It's the mechanisms inside the clock. The city can take it apart, send it off to have it fixed, at an estimated five to 10 grand, which is a little bit more than what we pay. Everything's expensive. We do have an individual, we had two. One, his, his schedule got a little mixed up. We have another one who is willing to work with us, who does do clock repairs. I'm going to say his name. It's David Lewis. If you see him, tell him thank you. He's working with our team, and we're trying to work with him on getting him, so he can come actually look at it, open it up, take it apart if necessary. So you may drive by Holland or Avenue E, and you have no problem. The whole system itself won't be removed, but the clock face and the mechanisms inside may be. And we're hoping we can get it fixed. If it is not a fixable task, it will come before council to either remove them or replace them. But it is a guessing game when you drive down the roads to know what time it is.
David Lewis fixes the big clocks on the couple, couple of Fort Davis courthouse.
He's a clockman.
Yes.
I bet he can do it.
Yes, he does cuckoo clocks, too, if anyone wants to know. So the strategic plan, for about a year, my big key word, key phrase has been strategic and plan. I can have a plan of my own in the direction I think the city should go, but I'm also a resident, and think that the residents should also be part of that plan. So when the mayor put it on, it was kind of like, I'm not ready. Don't, don't. But I am very excited. I want us to have a strategic plan, a one, a five, a 10, a 20, 30-year plan, so we know the direction that the city's going in. We have a lot of things that come up that, well, we didn't discuss this, or how are we going to pay for it? Or is this an emergency? Is this not an emergency? The number one complaint is our roads. We've not truly ever had the roads engineered to address some of these issues that keep coming up. And the whole idea of a strategic plan, step one, is to get the input from the community. So the first part of next year, which starts October 1st, is our fiscal year start. We are going to have six public meetings. They will be town hall-type meetings that we are going to encourage the public to attend, to help us come up with what is important to you. And you elect the council members and the mayor because you want them to do what's best for your community. Here, why not get it on paper and put it in a strategic plan? Instead of trying to focus on all of the things, emergencies, and trying to fix, let's plan for those. Financially, it's easier to prepare a budget. It's easier to save, and knows the directions. You can put money aside for specific projects, and you know from day to day what's going to happen. If in two years, you come and you come to the city and say, oh, I remember that meeting on October 12th, and where are we at with this? Then it's, we're right here. This is what's happened. This is where we're going. If there's delays, it's all very public. It's not just our streets. It's our utilities. It's understanding our finances, our reserves. Just your everyday living, our parks. The splash pad is a big conversation, but there's more to just the splash pad. There's other things that the community has mentioned. Let's get it on paper. So I'm really excited to move forward with the strategic plan. I don't expect it to happen overnight. I don't expect to have a 50-page bound copy January 1st for the council, but at least we have the input from the members of the audience, from your residents and council, so when we move forward, we understand. Later on in the presentations, or you'll hear about the, the human resource side and the employees and the staffing. That's part of a strategic plan. We have to look at everything, not just the big picture, but all the little things and the goals to get to that big picture. So I'm really excited. I hope everyone in this room will be there. We will post and advertise them. I have yet to send council that email that says, pick a date. And we do want them spread throughout the city. We don't want them all here at city hall. We want you to represent your ward and your room. So that is forthcoming. And I did not actually put a slideshow together. So the first thing I have is public comment process. This is just a friendly reminder. At a couple of the meetings, we've had the public comment cards not correctly filled out. It is a city ordinance, and one of the things that were required, of course, is to follow the rules that council passes down. So we ask that when you fill out a public comment card, that you make sure to include all of your information, especially the agenda item that you're talking on. It's important, because this does become a record within our city secretary's office. It's also what we reference within our minutes. And if you have any questions on how to fill this out, or maybe there's a topic that just didn't make it to the agenda, please, please call or stop by, visit with Gio or myself, because we may be able to answer it or point you in that direction sooner than you waited for the next council meeting, or even that current council meeting. It's just really important that we do follow that process. It is available online as well, so if you were to have something you were thinking about, get online tonight. Maybe it will be an agenda item. You do have all of your council members you can speak to as well, but you and myself are also available. Just a friendly reminder. And the next one kind of goes with my plan concept here. The regional landfill and transfer station. So the city is not directly involved with this, and I don't want people to think, oh, we're doing something with our landfill. We just signed a contract. That's not the case. Big Ben National Park has their own landfill. It is within the Big Ben National Park. They're regulated, just like we are, by TCQ. Life, manfields have lifespans. And what I find interesting about this, this project, this committee, is the knowledge and information and the contacts that we're developing. So they're not 100% sure down south if their landfill will be full within five years or 50 years. There's a lot of conflicting information. Their documentation shows five years, which means they have to legally close the landfill and open a new one. If you've ever worked with the federal government in national parks, it's a little political, a little dirty, a little hard to do. So they're trying to seek outside assistance on what they can do. What options do they have? And part of this, I call it a task force, is they basically contacted everyone within our region. The other big party that is participating in this is the county. Brewster County doesn't have a landfill. The landfill in this area is operated and owned by the city of Alpine. We have an expected life capacity of 38 years. That's without any big problems. That's with completely managing it at the current rate that we're managing it, compacting. You ever want to learn about trash, give me a call. There is a whole process to it, and we are regulating. We have your typical household trash, but then we have your construction trash as well. It's all regulated by the state of Texas. So they put together this task force to kind of get an idea of what, what is the national park going to do? But it also gives me the idea of what is Alpine going to do? In thirty eight years, none of us may be sitting in this room, we may have a new city hall for all we know. But in thirty eight years, the city will have to make a decision. Either we will have had to bought land or come up with a different way to dispose of it or transfer it out. So all of the key players, TCQ, the federal government, the county, local areas around us, including Van Horn, Marfa, Jeff Davis have all been invited to kind of like, hey, what are your thoughts? The big part of their project is Subaru has a program called Don't Feed the Landfill. And it is a grant program that the national park has gone after, that is going to help them kind of come up with ways to recycle again. Recycling in the United States does really good, really bad, really good, really bad. It's all an education and cost perspective. So I'm taking a lot of information from this, it's who to contact, getting ideas of how the national park's going to move forward. Maybe it's something that the city down the road can utilize as well. But it becomes part of that strategic plan. So I think it's important that you guys have that kind of, hey, this is what I've been looking into. I've been asked to attend these meetings, give them our input, because we are the landfill in this area. We don't accept trash from other places. And so for the national park to bring all their trash up to our landfill would reduce our lifespan significantly. We don't want to do that. The county has the same kind of issue, is they don't have a landfill, but they have Marathon, Lahitas, and Mutt, Tralina. Those are all contracted disposals. So maybe we could work together and come up with something to help our whole region. Van Horn, if you didn't know, just reopened their landfill. They actually had closed it and were shipping their trash somewhere else. Trash gets shipped all around us. And when we hit our daily maximum, we shift it to Midland Odessa. So trash is constantly moving in this region, and so it'll be nice to see if something can come from this project that will help the national park, but will also give us an insight on how we're going to handle our landfill in the future. Emergent. Were there any questions, sorry? On emergent air, and I did provide you a coffee, I'm trying to speak fast.
You're on the row.
So if anyone here is not aware, we did sign a contract with Emergent Air for our nine one one EMS services. I, I do want to lead off with, we do not have a contract for ground transports between the hospital and other places, and we do not have a contract for air transports. It's only if you dial nine one one and you need EMS service that the city has a contract with Emergent as well as the county. Part of this contract that was signed back in April was a whole long list of do's and don'ts and inspections. So on August seventeen, Greg Hennington and I actually did our first inspection of Emergent Air. So we went over and looked at their facilities. And looked at their ambulances, they have brought in different ambulances. They used to have the ones that they purchased off the last EMS provider. But they're not using them as much, they brought in their own equipment. It is all up to date. And they do have all of their insurance. And they do have a full staff. So they do, anytime they call nine one one, they've been able to cover the calls. They have had multiple, which is surprising to us because we didn't have accurate numbers, but they do have a lot of double callouts. So while they have one ambulance out, they'll have another one call at the same time, and they've been able to provide that coverage as well. They've been working with Marathon as required by the contract. And they are currently working on interlocal agreements. This is important for our region because if we have accidents anywhere within our tri-county, we want everyone to help each other out. If there's a a lot of casualties in South County, Brewster, or North Brewster County would go down there and assess. It's not, you get to your little line and that's it, no, there's the boundaries we do cross as long as we have those interlocal agreements, so it's really important. And so they're getting all of those in place to work with Jeff Davis, Presidio, City of Martha, Tralina Fire EMS. And then, of course, we're looking also into Pecos County, near Fort Stockton, because we do share a border with them as well. So those are really important. And we went through all of their equipment, we had a good conversation with Walter Kirkendall, he's our main contact with this contract. And the contract had a very long list of specifications that they had to follow, including use of resources, J-Rac funding, which isn't available to them yet. And then we came up with kind of a, well, that was the things we want now. So we sat down and we provided them a list of things that we still want. And the patient satisfaction, I hope no one in this room has to call nine one one, but if you do, we want the patients to have the ability to, hey, did they do good service, was it bad service? It's something we need to know because they are contracted on our behalf. And some of the little things we also put in there is the logo, so it was part of the contract. Currently, you see an ambulance go through and you may not know if it's working for the city of Alpine and Brewster County. Most of them are labeled with Emergent. The yellow one has Alpine EMS on it. So we've asked them to do a consolidated logo so that it represents all of our North Brewster County, City of Alpine area. So that when you call nine one one, you know that that's the ambulance that should show up. And of course, additional insurance needs. And they do have their insurance coverage, but we want to be put on their insurance as well. And of course, the mutual aid agreements, the customer service satisfaction, and then the reporting. So they've been providing council with a monthly report that kind of shows how many calls are within the city, within the county, the type of calls. Where is it? Trying to think of the whole list, it's a pretty long list. So we've asked them to to make it a little bit clearer, a little bit easier to understand, and also with the comparison. So you're not just having numbers thrown at you, you can see month to month to month exactly how much they're providing our city and our county. This is a dual contract, so it's really important. And we are required to do these inspections to make sure that they are staying on top of what they said that they would stay on top of. But it also gives us the opportunity to touch base with them and see if there's anything that we can help them with as far as the city and the county is concerned. I know there was kind of some issues at the beginning. They moved very fast and furious, the contract started May first. And so they moved in, took over immediately, and they've been running nonstop ever since. You've probably seen them out at the parade. They've become very involved with our community. They are actively trying to educate, provide classes and trainings and you know, maybe it's not a matter of nine one one, maybe it's a matter of, okay, let me walk you through your having anxiety attack. They're really trying to provide that preventative education and healthcare, and they just want to be part of our community. And that's all in that report. Any questions?
As we move on to city staff updates, utilities report by Director of Utilities, Keith Seager.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Councillor, Geo and Megan and everyone else. Glad you all could make it tonight. As our updates before the council are coming much more frequently now, my report will reflect the shorter time intervals, it won't be quite as much, but it'll be important material just the same. But it will be more brief in nature. Want to start off with, the next slide is the bar screen update on the wastewater treatment plant. This is the first part of the updating that we're going to do to it. The automated bar screen was installed. This automatically cleans the grades and deposits any of the junk that gets on them from the wastewater lines. And they put it into that, that wheelbarrow, and they just place it, move it out and put it into a dumpster and it goes on to to disposal from there. And the original installation took longer than normal simply because there was communication issues between the manufacturer and the contractor that was installing it. And they finally got it up and running and it's working great according to specifications. We've had no problem with any of the flows that we've had go through there, even during the downpours, so it's, it's working well. Next slide. Okay, some good news. The aerators, the new arrays for the wastewater treatment plant have arrived. There's the picture of the blades. And they're waiting for installation once all the components are here. Next slide, please. And this slide is of the gearboxes, transmissions and the electrical motors that drives the system. And they've been received as well. However, the biggest problem we have is the control panels, which are specialized for this equipment, have not. They were supposed to have been delivered August fifteenth. And we were notified by the lead engineer, Jacob Martin, that unfortunately, the manufacturer is having difficulty getting parts to make them. It's all part of that whole supply chain issue that's affecting everybody in the universe. Just parts are not available, and they're trying to get it manufactured soon as possible. And once they do and they get the boxes to us, you know, we have contractors ready to go to install them. However, he can't guarantee when they're going to be here, so it's just a waiting game at this point. However, is this one of the issues that the TCQ took exception to when they did an inspection of our facility last December? They're not happy with the fact that they haven't been installed yet, but our hands are tied, we just can't do anything else. I mean, we're waiting to do it as soon as we get the parts. And again, I don't have an updated time of when they're going to arrive. I just, I hope to get fresh information. And last slide, please. Once again, I'm sure some of you noticed, you know, you can't help sometimes see that with our age, infrastructure, you know, leaks pop up anytime, everywhere. Especially during spring or summer, when the ground gets softer and heavy vehicles ride on them, and it just creates leaks. And and our crew does the best we can right now. My crew is down to a team leader and three technicians. And one of those is out on medical. So they do the best they can with what they have available. It's a daunting task, not this past Sunday, the Sunday before. Every one of them, plus the two meter readers slash work order people, spent all day out there in country club states, back in the brush, working on a leak all day long. You know, they get tiredly of themselves, but they're tired. And but so just bear with us, we do the best we can, and we'll keep, keep moving forward. And that's all I have at the moment, unless you have any questions.
Thank you. I appreciate it. All right, so no report from Abel this evening.
What? Abel's not here, he's actually out. I do want to mention, you do have his slides and presentation in the package that was available online. But I do want to mention that despite the fact that gas prices went up so high, and now that they've come back down about forty cents, we're still selling fuel at the airport, and that's a good thing. So that's part of the budget amendment that's later on in the packet. And they're bringing in the money right now, so we're going to utilize it.
Thank you. All right, moving on to public hearings. Okay, public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty two dash oh eight dash oh three and ordinance loving ad valum taxes for use and support of the municipal government of the city of Alpine, Texas for the fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, providing for apportioning each levy for specific purposes and providing when taxes shall become due and when the same shall become delinquent if not paid. Is there anyone here to comment on this? Okay, seeing none, move on. Public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty two dash oh eight dash oh four and ordinance amending chapter ninety four, traffic and vehicles, amending article one in general, amending sections ninety four dash thirty five, police escort fee to the Alpine Code of Ordinances, repealing ordinance twenty nineteen dash oh three dash oh one, abolishing the requirements of a fee for requested police escort services for manufactured homes. So anyone here to speak on this? Okay, see none, moving on. Consent agenda, city secretary.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's consent agenda consists of eight items. Item one, approval of August sixteenth, twenty twenty two, regular meeting minutes. Item two, approval of the excused absence of Councillor Tandy from the August sixteenth, twenty twenty two, regular city council meeting due to a family vacation. Item three, approval of city council calendar of meetings for fiscal year twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three. Item four, approval of the appointment of Clayton Shute to the Ward one position on the Building and Standards Commission. Item five, approval of the appointment of Joshua Ruselo to the Ward three position on the Building and Standards Commission. Item six, approval of the appointment of Jerry Davis to the Ward four position on the Building and Standards Commission. Item seven, approval of the appointment of Ralph Garcia to the Ward five position on the Building and Standards Commission. Item eight, approval of Hanger lease rental rate increase of one cent per square foot ground lease rate at the Alpine Casparis Municipal Airport. This concludes the presentation of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Any emotion?
I make a motion, we accept it as presented.
Okay, I need a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Let's vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. Passage unanimously. Okay, moving on to information or discussion items. Discussion regarding downtown lighting and preparation for art walk, Councilmember Stokes.
I was presented with this map probably, probably three weeks ago. The art walk people have gone and looked at all our streetlights. And anything green is on and anything red isn't. I have visited with Megan, Megan's been in contact, they've looked at them, part of them were being told have no electricity to them. So they probably won't be running an art walk. And I do know that, I did want my art walk, now that we are all aware of it, and that Megan's working on it.
I am, and Eddie and his team is actually doing most of the work.
And that's good. Tell them thanks.
Yes.
I do, I do think it's a safety issue, you get the people down there art walk, not only they're all drinking, but they're all in those alleys. I just think there needs to be some kind of light, I think it's a safety issue.
Well, we can always get the big spotlights that Daryl has.
Flashlights, I mean, I don't know. I just, I just think there needs to be.
We are.
And I know you are working on it.
Several remodels, repair, electricity's been cut. And it's not something we can pull the cord in and follow.
Yeah, so. But it is. I want to let them know that Megan is on top of it, they're all looking at all of them. And I guess they'll fix once they can, and if they're not, can we pull them down? I mean, there's no electricity issue, why is it there?
We are going to look into that. Eddie and I have discussed it multiple times, and we kind of drove in that area and kind of pinpointed as well. And some of the AP, we're going to try and help get them replaced, so not only when they are replaced and fixed, it's Night Sky compliance.
That's good.
And so we may not have all of them fixed, but we're hoping to get a majority of them. Otherwise, I will recommend Night Sky or Art Walk do the flashlights for swag.
Okay, any other discussion? All right. So discussion on the need for an airport advisory board, this was Councilmember Rodriguez's.
I don't know what she wanted to discuss.
Okay, all right, so we'll move on. Update on city employees to include total headcount budgeted for fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, number of employees in each department, resignations by department since October first, twenty twenty one, comparison of Alpine retention statistics with national average, current staff shortages by department. This was also Councilmember Rodriguez's, but I believe you have some information for us, Megan, is that correct?
Yes, I put the presentation together.
Okay.
So I know she was wanting specific years. But when you look at numbers, you have to really have something to compare it to. And so I went and collected as much data for the past several years, so you can kind of see the ups and downs the city is going through. And then kind of a little summary at the end. So for positions, this one is why I kind of brought it up during the budget process, that we really need to to budget by positions. The prior several years, we budgeted by people who've been employed and then maybe adjusted up and down accordingly. It is technically by positions, but if you have fifteen people in a department and you budget fifteen, and then the next year you don't, and you only had thirteen, then we budgeted for thirteen, and then kind of back and forth. There aren't real significant changes. There aren't real significant changes in the actual positions that have been budgeted year after year. A lot of it has been switched from part-time to full-time, which makes a big difference at the end of the year for full-time position. And it's also how employees were classified. Over the past five years, the city has classified employees slightly different. PD has been one of the biggest impacted as far as what is a reserve officer? Are they reserved? Are they part-time? Are they full-time, but we just don't budget as much? Do we budget them as full-time? So that's been cleaned up. A lot of the departments between twenty twenty started getting administrative assistance. The paperwork is, it's never ending, it just constantly piles up. We are at a higher rate for this upcoming fiscal year for twenty twenty-three. As I mentioned during the budget process, it was important to really consider the utilities and the streets. They're the two biggest impacts and increased employees. The other big impact, and I know Judy will always say, I don't want a part-timer, is we did redo some of the part-time positions and made them full-time. We've had positions in the budget. We had a media coordinator at one point. We've had some interesting developments throughout the years. So I wanted to give you an idea from fiscal year twenty twenty to fiscal year twenty-three, to kind of see that we're growing. We just haven't been able to always fill them. And I do have a few notes. We've had change in structures, so the building services and environmental services now show instead of full-time in both their, a part-time and a part-time, because Adalina is doing code enforcement, but she's also doing environmental services. Whereas last fiscal year, there was three full-time employees, now there's only two full-time and a half-time. The half-time is Adalina. But the position split, utilities. It does include the customer service clerks. It includes two customer service clerks in gas, and it includes two customer service clerks in water. So when you look at the, oh, well, he has seventeen employees, well, no, that's not the case. Two of them are actually customer service clerks. But they're paid out of those funds, and that's where the money comes from. I kind of laugh at this one, the water, so the utility director and the administrative assistant are part-timers. They work part-time water, part-time sewer. So that's how their budget is split. So position-wise, it's a full-time position, but the money's coming out of both departments. So that's where you see some of the, the changes, whereas before, it's being reflected as a full-time, but it really isn't a full-time in water or full-time in sewer, it's a split salary. And if I go too fast, please, perhaps, slow me down, ask questions. And the current number of filled and vacant positions. So this was as of August. Ideally, and if Chris was here, I'd be thanking her. This was a presentation for October. I wanted to finish the fiscal year, so we had a sound visual of everything that happened during the year. We never know what's going to happen over the next two weeks, three weeks, so this is as of the end of August. So we have a hundred and three positions altogether, it's part-time and full-time. The vacancies, we have five part-time positions and sixteen full-time positions still open that we are advertising. Most of those are in your streets and your water. Those are the two hardest departments to fill. We are currently doing interviews. Daryl's been on top of me as of eight o'clock this morning, when are we scheduling? We have recently hired five employees for various departments within the city. Soon as applications are coming in, we're trying to get through that process so that we don't have that downtime. We are redesigning our HR department as well. When someone applies, we want to ensure that they understand the process from start to finish. It does take more than a week to get that call back. There are things that we do have to check as part of it, background checks, references. We try not to interview one person at a time, we want to interview a group altogether. So we currently have sixty-eight full-time and fourteen part-time that are active employees. Please also note that this doesn't really include our interns, our lifeguards, our seasonal help. They are a different category altogether, so they're not included in these counts.
So Megan, on the human resources, it shows one part-time vacate, that's going to be a part-time human resource, and what's the other part-time?
So that's as of this year, as of right now. So next year, we actually budgeted as a full-time position. Currently, it was part-time human resource, part-time finance. So we took the part-time and made it into one. It's a full-time job, and it's a lot of work. It protects your city. Separations by department. So I like to tell people when you look at fiscal year twenty twenty, nobody wanted to leave their job in the pandemic. We had employees stay just because everyone was scared. They may not have been happy, but they stayed employed because you didn't know what was going to happen the next day. In twenty twenty-one, we had thirty-one employees leave, and in twenty twenty-two, we had thirty employees. And then it's broken down by all the different departments. When you look at the national, national average, this is slightly different than how we look at our fiscal years. The national average is January to December. So I use the US Bureau of Labor Statistics. They post monthly and annually the different statistic rates for retention. Hireable number of positions available all across the United States, and they break it down into specific categories. Governments unique, when you look at government, I look at, well, is utilities government, or should they be classified under utilities? There is no category for law enforcement or military considered government. So in order to look at this, I had to break it down into two different aspects, on a yearly comparison, and then for this fiscal year on a monthly, because we're not at the end of a calendar year, to be able to reflect the correct data. And SHRM, which is the Society for Human Resource Management, a nationally recognized organization that the city, well, I'm a member of, has a wealth of information on how to do this. They provide forms and documents to make sure, when you're putting in numbers, you're just not putting in numbers and saying, oh, that looks good. They walk you through the process to make sure what's being reported is accurate. And I felt like it's important to understand that, because when you look at it, Alpine is below the national average comparison. Year after year, month after month. In June of this year, we are significantly higher. That is the month that I mentioned to council, that we had people for school, military. We did have a couple people wanting for better opportunities. And so I wanted to kind of show you the year after year, that the city is below the national average. But then when you look at it from month to month, we're still doing good. The one thing I really wanted to provide, and this is something new to this fiscal year, is we don't have a formal termination process or separation process that says, hey, why are you leaving? Besides the two weeks notice that says, thank you for the opportunity, I'm leaving. We started to do a little bit more to understand why our employees leaving. The big thing everyone keeps bringing up is, of course, the money. That's not always the case. Unfortunately, because I don't have prior year information, because we didn't keep track of it, we just kept track of who left. We've had three individuals who were terminated. Please understand that employees terminate themselves. You're terminated for not following proper procedures, or putting yourself or someone in harm's way. We had an individual retire this year. Everyone showed up for her retirement party. But the next section is interesting, and it's the twenty-six who left the city and why. And so over the past year, the current and past HR people were like, hey, what's going on? Why are you kind of leaving? Getting a little inside, and we did have people leave for better opportunities and wages. We encourage people to do better. If I have an employee telling me they want to resign, I hope to God and I pray that you're going to do something that's better for you and your family, and if it's something internal with the city, let's try and fix it. I don't want them to leave because they're miserable. I want them to leave because they're bettering themselves. And that's how we worded to all of our employees. We don't get upset, we understand. Make more money. You, you want to try a whole different career, we encourage and support that. Deep down inside, it's really hard. Our utility suffers from it, because you don't want them to leave, you want them to stay. But sometimes it's just how it works better for them. We had three who left for medical and family reasons. Outside their own spoken employment, you know, they had family issues come up, and they want to go home, they want to be close to those parents and those siblings that they're having to support. We did have one join the military. Encourage it. We had ten actually relocate. This one is very interesting, because a lot of times people say, oh, it's, you know, more money, better job. We actually had ten employees literally just move out of Alpine. Not necessarily because of another job. We had several move because they moved back home. We had several move because they found a girlfriend who lives in a different city. We, we kind of, you know, you really want to wait to make it permanent, but they, they move. We had several who did take jobs in other cities and then moved, you know, Marfa or Davis, close by, but they still left the area. We had two that left for scheduling and school conflicts. We do encourage employees to get their education, but we also hire them as a full-time employee with the understanding that they're going to work an eight-hour day job. We try to be flexible, but sometimes it just doesn't work. Don't always want a part-time employee either, so they've made it hard for these two individuals. And we did have two that just walked out. No rhyme, reason, just said, I quit, here's my stuff and left. But that's their choice, and so we are trying to record the information so that we can address not only why they're leaving, how they're leaving, but is there something we can do better? Which comes to my last slide, which is part of the strategic plan is understanding. I have read probably more articles than I will ever admit to on employee retention, and how to better employees and how to keep them here. And what do we need? And, you know, I hear so many different theories and concepts. We're not alone. City governments are suffering all over the nation. It's not something new. There's a whole different group of employees coming in, but you still want to retain the ones that you have. So some of the things that were brought to my attention, and just looking at the different articles, is actually having a streamlined application process and onboarding. One thing I mentioned earlier, when you apply at the city of Alpine, I personally, well, what are they going to call me? Do they give my application? What's next in the process? What do I do? When we get hired, we're short-staffed, so we rush through it, instead of saying, hey, this, welcome to the city. We try to encourage this and change it, but we need a process. We need something documented. So when you go to our website and you go to apply, you know that you're not going to receive a phone call until this date, because the applications are open for two weeks, three weeks. If you ever visit our website, our applications are posted. I think water and streets have been posted probably for five years straight. They never come down. There, there's no change, there's no rhyme or reason. Need to refresh it, need to update it. Put in that process so that when you, like I said, you apply, you know if you're going to get the interview or not. This can be automated through a software program, and it could have that human nature where, you know what, we just put it in our calendar, hey, pick up the phone and make that call. We're looking at it all. I'm looking at our review of our workforce diversity. We have a very diverse workforce. It's a changing age, demographics, who wants to, to work here, who doesn't want to work here, how do we encourage you to work here? It's looking at all of it. Our organizational chart. When I get hired, I want to know how am I going to move? How am I going to grow? How, where am I going to go up? Can I go up? Can I go lateral, horizontal? What direction can I go? Improving that. Our job descriptions. We've been presenting job descriptions to council for several months now. And even now, I go back and I look at them and I look at other cities, and I'm not happy. I want a job description that when I get hired with the city of Alpine, I know the basics of my job. I don't have this may or may not, but a solid understanding of what I'm applying and going to do. Everyone in the city of Alpine, I can guarantee you, does more than what their job description says, which is why you will always find another job duty as assigned. We wear multiple hats, but I'd like to know, okay, I'm going to have other jobs, you can kind of tell me what. Give me an understanding to show me how I can move up. Establish a pay ladder. This is a big one for me, and I know the staff has heard me mention it, you've heard me mention it, is an in-line and comparable cities and industries. Everyone says we got to change the pay rate, we got to restructure, we got to bring them in at more money, and that's great. You can bring them on at more money, but then what are you going to do with them? You've got to look at what you're going to do with the employee you brought in at fifteen dollars compared to the one that six months ago you brought in at thirteen fifty. You've got to look at that compression, and then you have to look at, okay, how are they moving forward? This is where this ladder comes into place, because you hired me for fifteen, but if I'm going to be at fifteen for five years, and the only thing I'm going to get is maybe a cost of living, why do I want to stay employed with the city of Alpine? So it's putting that in place and having it so that, hey, if I do A, B, and C, I'm going to go here. But then also understanding that if I get to the end of my plateau, and the only way I'm going to go up is I take on those responsibilities, and I take on the different jobs, and I move up. It's just a clear, transparent growth. Our employee benefit packages, I will brag that the city of Alpine has the best employee benefit package. I've worked at other places, believe it or not, and we have probably one of the best, if not the best. We provide part of the dependent coverage for our employees. Our employees do not pay a hundred percent of their dependent coverage. The city covers part of it, because we know how hard it is to work for the city, and we know how tight funds can be. We provide eighteen paid holidays, vacation, sick leave, flex time. All of our directors are very welcoming and work with our employees. Uniforms, cell phones, vehicles. It is harder to get the tools for the job, but we're still doing it. We provide a lot for them, retirement, life insurance. It doesn't just stop with, you know, your paycheck. There's a lot more to it. And it's really important that we focus on that moving forward. I would at some point like the city to consider retiree benefit package. You have twenty years of service, thirty-five years of service. We kind of kick you out the door and say, thank you for your service, and that's it. Maybe the city could look at providing something for retirees as part of the health insurance. Different companies, I know Sol Ross does a better job than us, does provide that coverage for their employees when they retire. But I think we should start looking into that, because we want to encourage them to stay, but we don't want to make them stay because they have to wait until they can get Medicaid, until they're older, because then you have that employee who's like, how much more before I can, like, you don't want that. And the big one that's been brought to my attention, just within the bubble here at City Hall, is the work-life balance. Our employees don't always necessarily want money, they want time off. They want to go home, they want to rest, you know, football season started off, it's every Friday they could get off at three so they could go support their bucks. That's what they want. It's hard to, to realize the work-life balance when it's not ever been in place. I'm horrible, I am not a work-life balancer at all. But I see it, and I understand the need for it, so our employees can feel like if I take a day off, I'm not going to be overwhelmed when I come back. This one is a really new one, because of the pandemic, is the remote hybrid opportunities. We do not work from home very well. A lot of our jobs here at the city are in the field. Fixing water leaks, fixing sewer breaks, fixing gas lines, answering nine-one-one calls. I don't think the city would appreciate if I sent accounts receivable home with all the money to do it from home. We have these safeguards, so it's developing, how do we do that remote hybrid so that our employees do get that opportunity? During the pandemic, only a handful of employees actually work from home. Otherwise, we all were in the buildings that the city owns or out on the streets. Another one that was brought up was available IT resources. This one came from a document created from a millennial group. They're into the gadgets, they're into the digital process, they want to come in and they don't want Windows seven. They don't want working with, you know, Adobe ninety-three. They want the higher IT equipment and data to be able to do their jobs, because they are becoming more aware and use it a lot better. So it's being able to provide that for them, sorry. And then the last one, that was repeated through every article, is training, mentoring, and growth. And those are the most things that every group that I looked at kind of targeted was, you have to train them, you have to grow them, you have to mentor them so that they want to stay. We are not the only ones struggling with, with HR staffing issues. This is nationwide. And I think after reading all these articles and looking at it and just observing our own staff here at the city, it's important to know, I can tell you all day what I think they want. I've reached out to SHRM, who offers an employee satisfaction survey, because I think it's time we listen to our employees. And so we'll implement that and have them actually take the survey to kind of tell us, hey, I want a day off and not have to pick up my phone because I'm on call. Or if I get sick, I don't want to be at the hospital and have someone saying, hey, do you remember where you put that report? Those are more important. Or maybe it's, you know, I know I can do my job half day at the office, half day at home, work with me. I'd like to get that feedback back from them so that we can come back as part of our strategic plan. And how do we move forward so that we are the number one employer in Alpine? That everyone does want to work here and not anywhere else. We used to have applications and lines out the door. This was a place people wanted to work. This is job security. Your local government is not going to shut down. It's not going to disappear overnight. We're not going to go belly up. Let's get that back and have all the employees come back. Sorry, it's kind of long, but there's a lot of information. Any questions? Thank you for that. So just be prepared. You're going to start seeing more and more on employees.
That's good. We got to have. All right. Any other questions? All right, moving on. The next one is mine. We're going to have a presentation by Steve, Country Club Estate Resident, to discuss the monetary value of country club estates to the city and the cost to residents for roads that need repair. Right, come on up. So Steve, how do you say your last name?
Soft G.
Soft G.
So I'm Steve Soft G. In Ward Five. And I do want to thank the mayor and all of the members of the, uh, uh, the council for their time and effort and energy that, that you do put in and it does take a lot of that. And, and I do appreciate that. So I, I do have some information that, that I have prepared. Uh, the first being that I'm looking at and I have no idea what, what sequence you, you guys have. Uh, but the one that I'm looking at is the property identification in twenty twenty-one taxes. These are the taxes paid by, by, uh, the property owner with, with that property ID. I didn't put the owner's name. I just put the property ID. That's all I was interested in. How much money was being collected by Alpine Country Club Estates as a whole? So if you, you know, you, you can glance through that, but if you, if you flip over to the next page, you'll see that i- in general, Alpine Country Club Estate pays a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per year. Just out of that particular development. Well, yeah, I, I have been there for fifteen years. Well, if you multiply that number by fifteen, which, which I like to play with numbers, and you will come up with basically two-point-five million. So out of the, the, the fifteen years I've been here, uh, basically we've paid, uh, as a, a development, two-point-five million. And so, uh, and I know taxes changed, uh, over the years. But, you know, say ten years ago, uh, taxes weren't this much, but they were equivalent at the time. So it doesn't really matter. Ten years ago, it was basically the equivalent of that, that amount. So two-point-five million and then we're dealing with the road that, that you guys have seen and hopefully you guys have, have tried to maneuver uh, through that road. And if you haven't, I highly recommend it because it's very difficult. And there are several areas that you will not get through without hitting multiple potholes. And I can't imagine that you could make it to my house, which is the very last one on the road, uh, without hitting somewhere between twenty-five to fifty potholes, uh, in that process. Well, for, for two-point-five mil, uh, I think we should have a better road. That's, that is ridiculous, uh, in my opinion. Uh, also, personal experience, I do have that. So these are, these are costs to, to us personally, uh, at my household. So this year you can look at, uh, we have purchased five tires to date. Year's not a could get worse, uh, for sure, uh, you know, and in twenty-twenty-one, you know, it was, um, anyway, uh, one tire, uh, is all it was. Uh, we do had, had, uh, some other things happen. Uh, in twenty-twenty, it was three tires. So I thought I'd give a three-year average on this. So in three years, then we have, have spent, uh, basically sixteen hundred, uh, on tires. And so I decided, well, okay, let's just say, uh, well, there are thirty-one homes in Alpine Country Club Estates. So let's just say there are, uh, probably on the average, two cars per home. I know one home has four or five. I don't know how many people live there, but I think it's generational. Like twelve generations and I'm just kidding. Generational. Uh, and anyway, so let's just say two, uh, automobiles per. Okay, so i- if you, if you multiplied that out, uh, over a period of three, well, over one year, uh, that's over a hundred grand. People are paying out, uh, just for new tires. Uh, in, you know, but those tires are not wearing out. We live in Alpine, Texas. You know, we don't do that much driving. Uh, you know, we go to marathon occasionally. Uh, we go to Martha occasionally. Uh, but, uh, you know, we're not going great distances. So that's a hundred grand uh, per year, just by the people who live out there. And of course, you know, that's a significant, uh, is, is what it amounts to. Uh, basically five-hundred-and-forty-three dollars, uh, per household is what's being paid. Okay, and then I have our, our individual receipts, which, which you can see you have those. In addition to that, I have provided a, a photograph of just one area of the road. And like I said, there are several areas and I do once again want to, to, uh, uh, encourage you to, to make an effort to try to make it up that road. And, and just to see what, what that involves. I had thought about, uh, buying some blue ribbons and if you actually made it to my home, uh, you could ring the doorbell and I would bring you a blue ribbon. I decided against that. You know, it's kind of like having little stickers, you know, little smiley faces. I thought, well, we're maybe we're just going a little bit too ridiculous with that. But, uh, so I didn't do that. Uh, and I do want to thank those, uh, who, uh, live in Alpine, Clint Country Club Estates who are here and they're here because they're concerned. They wouldn't be here otherwise.
Thank you. All right. Any questions, discussion?
Okay.
Well, there's so much that could be said. Thank you for your presentation. Thank y'all for coming. I think we as a council all know, we've all been out there. We know what y'all are facing. I don't, I don't know what the solution is other than I'm going to play the lottery every Saturday. And if I win, Mr. Softy, I'm coming to your house. And you're going to give me a blue ribbon. Our big problem is, we also, we, we also inherited these drops too. We inherited what we were left with.
Sure.
Now we've got to try to figure out what, how to, how to cut those slices of the pie off. And there's not enough pie. So I, I'd love to. We had a way to do it. I'd send them out there tomorrow.
There is money budgeted for this upcoming fiscal year specifically for the Alpine Country Club Estates.
But is it the road going to them or is it their road?
It's the road going to them currently. Piece by piece.
I know, I know. By the time you get that piece and then get to their pieces, we're right back where we were. Now that's the way I see it. I don't, I don't, I'm not a road person.
They're supposed to last.
Yeah.
I mean, and everybody's concerned, you know, like Orange Street, like we talked about the last meeting. I mean, everybody on Orange Street, you know, has contacted me about, you know, that repair too. I mean, we're all working on that.
Yes.
I mean, so.
I've heard about Orange also.
So we're all, you know, we're all trying to do our very best to help, you know, everyone that is concerned about our road. So we're working on it.
Right, good. All right, uh, for the final discussion item, presentation by Mary Ann DeBarbury regarding drainage problems, Councilmember Stokes.
Well, you did your little thing. Now we're going to really, now we're able to talk about it. Oh, yes, same, same kind of problem.
And those pictures in here.
Yeah, I sent it in our packet. Yes. You've got the same problem I have in front of my same road, same thing. You get five inches of rain. It's going to stand there and hope. And it's going to run off. How long does it take to run off? Mine runs off by the next day.
Even just a little bit. I have a lake.
But how long does it run off? Because we've all got those lakes with five inches of rain.
Uh, if we haven't had rain, it's gone the next day. If we have had rain, it's there a week.
Yeah, I know. And I face the same thing at my house. I don't know. I know.
I have a, I have one in my house.
And I know, I know the mayor. I know what she's got out there. That runs down those roads. So, so once again, we're back to, you're in that piece of pie with them.
Well, I, I said, if you could bring a road grader in and just do a little trench where the water has somewhere to go.
Do we have a road grader?
Toward the creek.
We do, but you, you really can't do that without making sure the engineering of it isn't going to affect the overall flow. This is a natural water feature. Which is one of the strategic plan items that I really wanted to discuss in, in detail is we've had an engineer report to tell us the road conditions that we know they're bad, but we really need to have someone come in and tell us the proper way to fix them to ensure the flow of water. Our own state highway has problems. Um, when it rains, they have to close the underpass because that all washes into those, that drain and that drain gets clogged. But to have someone come in and, and look at how do we engineer the roads to make sure the water flows certain directions. Um, Marcy and I already kind of jumped on this one. Uh, Marcy's our grant writer. Um, there are funds available through the CDVG. Um, unfortunately, we only qualify for particular areas of Alpine. Um, we are not considered. It's mainly the south side. Um, if you've ever gone down Murphy Street, you'll notice that there's a concrete divide right in the middle of the road. That was put in by a ground specifically to get the water to flow into that creek that crosses on Murphy Street. Um, because it tears the road apart. Um, if you drive down there right now, especially cross over on Eleventh Street, um, you can see where the paving is actually just eaten away, but the concrete's still there. So we're looking at that grant to address certain water flow areas on the south side. Um, but this is something an engineer really would need to come in. I know we could probably do it in-house, but we've done that for years. Um, water is very mystical. It goes where it wants. And we don't want to put up a curb and decide to go into your neighbor's backyard because it's going to take a different direction. We want to make sure that it's all done correctly and make sure it gets to where it needs to go.
I mean, you can just send it right down to Stockton Street and it would go straight down to the.
Come to my house.
And if, if there was a way that we could capture all of it and put it into big rain catchment containers for the future, that would be great too. But this is part of the strategic plan is understanding. If we want to repair it, let's not just patch it. Let's repair it. Let's actually address the real issue.
And I think that's what we discussed over the years. I think there's been neglect of all the roads. Y'all's road, your road, my road, this road out here, under the house. Everything was neglected and we'll do that later. Well, we're at light. We're there. So.
But thank you for hearing me. I appreciate it.
Okay, any other discussion? Yes, please, please approach the podium so that we can have you on tape. And then just your name and word, please.
Yeah, I'm Kate Woodward, Ward One. Uh, is there any time for discussion on the number two, item number two, uh, for the Airport Advisory Board?
Would that be up to council for a vote?
Item two is a, uh, the abolishing of the fees for escorts.
I'm sorry. I mean for the information discussion items, number two.
Oh, okay. Uh, Councilmember Rodriguez had that on their discussion for the need of an airport advisory board. So you were here to discuss that item?
Yes, if that's appropriate.
So we need a motion, a second and a majority vote because, you know, that would have, uh, taken place at the public comments section.
Okay, all right. So do I have a motion? Okay, we'll try to add it to the agenda.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Okay, moving on to action items. All right. Action item number one, City Manager.
Approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-zero-eight-dash-zero-three. An ordinance letting add valorem taxes for use in support of the municipal government of the city of Alpine, Texas for the fiscal year twenty-two-two-twenty-three, providing for appropriating each levy for specific purposes and providing when taxes shall become due and when the same shall become delinquent if not.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I moved the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a total tax rate, uh, point four-six-six-three-two-six, which is effectively a two percent increase of the tax rate by the adoption of ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-zero-eight-dash-zero-three for fiscal year twenty-two-two-twenty-two-three, which includes as part of the total tax rate, point four-three-zero-six-two-five for maintenance and operations and point zero-three-five-seven-one for debt service.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that. Okay.
And on this one, Mayor, uh, if we can get a roll call though.
The say requires that we be that specific in our motion.
Okay. All right. Do we want discussion first? All right, discussion. All right. Yes, City Secretary?
Counselor Stokes. All righty, Counselor Teddy? Something? Johnson? Yes, please. Okay.
Okay, motion passes. All right, um, action item number two, City Manager.
Approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-zero-eight-dash-zero-four. An ordinance amending chapter ninety-four, traffic and vehicles, amending article one in general, amending section ninety-four-dash-thirty-five, police escort fee to the Alpine Code of Ordinances, repealing ordinance two-thousand-nineteen-dash-zero-three-dash-zero-one, abolishing the requirements of a fee for requested police escort services for manufactured homes.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion. We approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-zero-eight-dash-zero-four.
Okay, do I have a second? Discussion? Okay, C nine, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. And we pass it unanimously. Okay, action item number three, City Manager.
Approve the first reading of ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-zero-nine-dash-zero-one, an ordinance amending fiscal year twenty-two-one-dash-twenty-two-two budgets.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion. We approve the first reading of ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-zero-nine-dash-zero-one.
Okay, do I have a second? Discussion? C nine, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries. Action item number four, City Manager.
Approve resolution twenty-two-two-dash-zero-nine-dash-zero-one, a resolution amending appendix A utility fees, updating fees for city utility services.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two, twenty-two-two-dash-o-nine-dash-o-one.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, discussion? Okay, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries unanimously. Moving on to action item number five, Councilmember Johnson.
Prove resolution twenty-two-two-dash-zero-nine-dash-zero-two. A resolution continuing collaborative improvement efforts for twenty-two-two-twenty-three between the city of Alpine and the Alpine Country Club to accompany the two-thousand-and-sixteen lease.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion. We approve resolution twenty-two-two-dash-zero-nine-dash-zero-two.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? C nine, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, action item. Okay, action item number six, City Manager.
Approve resolution 2022 dash oh nine dash oh three, a resolution approving the city's portion of the 2022 multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation action plan.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion. We approve resolution 2022 dash zero nine dash zero.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Okay, see none. Let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Okay, action item number seven, Councilmember Stokes.
I make a motion to approve the City Manager contract.
Okay. I need a motion?
She made the vote.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? See none. Let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, carries unanimously. Okay, action item number eight. Councilmember Rodriguez is not here. City Manager?
Approval of sublease on hangar number forty-four belonging to Kate Woodward.
Okay, I need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I need a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
I was just wanting to ask Rod, again, this is, he's given us the proper notification.
He's given us the proper notification. Section six of his current lease says that the, uh, less he can lease it if he gives us, uh, notice and he gets written consent from the city. So that's what he's done. And so the, he's, he's following the proper procedure to get a written sublease to it. So my understanding it's just being subleased to the merchant. So that's good. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Action item number nine, once again, was Councilmember Rodriguez, City Manager.
Approve partnership between the city of Alpine and Kate Woodward for reimbursement of Kate being promised by previous city manager at airport hangar number forty-four. Reimbursement may be in the form of funds and or waiving of lease charges.
Okay, I need a motion? Okay, no motion? All right, so item.
It was lost due to lack of a motion.
Okay, so item is lost. Okay, and that carries us to the City Councilmember comments. Councilmember Stokes.
Um, I'd like to thank Rod and Megan for both their reports. Thank you, Mayor, for all the stuff you put on our agenda that we hear every day. But we'd like to know that people out there are still thinking about us. Uh, thank you, Davis Lewis. I hope you can fix those flaws. Thanks, Keith. Thanks, Abel, even though you weren't here. I think that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Tandy?
I'd like to thank you as well for all that you post, you know, and keep us updated because I do look at that and that is really a great thing that you have going on. I'd like to thank Keith as well, you know, I know about the water issues that we have. And after being in Mexico on my vacation, I'm very, very thankful for the water that we have here. Um, I also want to thank Tommy Lewis about, you know, his point on the crosswalks and the cycling because I do, you know, I do cycle in town and, and I do notice that some people pay attention to the crosswalks and some people don't. So I think that is something that we'll look into. So I want to thank him for.
Holland, that probably has to be in collaboration with Sexton.
Right, but it is something that, you know, we as a city need to be aware of that we need to pay attention, you know, to people crossing at those places.
Double flashing yellow lights that's right across.
All over town, really.
Could help.
Right.
And both speed limits on Avenue E and Harlem, they're regulated by the state, you know. They're, it's up to the, for them to, yours, and those are federal highways too. Yeah.
Okay, comments, Councilmember Sondant?
No, it's a good thing.
Okay, Councilmember Johnson?
Other than agreeing with all those, uh, compliments that have been said before, I concur a hundred percent.
Thank you. And then I wanted to thank everybody who attended in person and on Zoom. Um, thank you for the public comments to Linda and Margaret and Tommy and Mary Ann. Also, David Lewis, I appreciate him looking into our clocks for us. And Megan, for your willingness to involve all the residents in a strategic plan and planning the town hall meetings. And also thank you, Keith, Director of Utilities, for your presentation. And thank you, Steve, for coming and presenting to us. That's it. So at this time, we're going to take a ten-minute recess.
We're all gonna fight for that.
We also need to, uh.
Go into exactly the session for back.
We need a bunch.
We need a bunch of rest.
Bye.
Bye, bye, everybody.
Okay, returning from recess. And this brings us to item number 11, Executive Session pursuant to Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. The City Council reserves the right to convene into Executive Session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting for any posted agenda item or to receive advice from the attorney as permitted by law. Tonight, the City Council will recess into Executive Session pursuant to Section 551.071 to consult with City Attorney on the status of understanding the status of the outstanding West Texas gas invoice from the winter freeze of 2021. Okay, I need a motion and a second to recess into Executive Session.
So move.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to recess into Executive Session discussion. Seeing none, we will proceed to a vote. If you would like to vote in favor of the motion, please indicate this by raising your right hand. Okay, it's unanimous. The motion to recess into Executive Session passes unanimously. We are recessing into Executive Session at 7:14 PM.
All right. Mayor Jones.
Okay, may I please have a motion and a second to reconvene into open session?
So move.
I'll second you.
All right, I have a motion by Counselor Johnson and seconded by Counselor Stokes to reconvene into open session. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will move to take no action.
We need a vote.
We need a vote. Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, unanimous. We are reconvening into open session at 7:31, 7:32 PM. Okay, that brings us to item number 12, Action After Executive Session. May I please get a motion?
A big motion to take no action.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Counselor Johnson and seconded by Counselor Sinaté to take no action. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to a vote. If you would like to vote in favor of the motion, please indicate this by raising your right hand. Okay, the motion to take no action passes unanimously. Now, may I have a motion and a second with no vote to adjourn the meeting?
So.
Okay, and I need a second.
I'll second that.
All right, okay, so I have a motion by Counselor Tandy and seconded by Counselor Stokes to adjourn the meeting. We are adjourning at 7:32 PM.
Not a third.